Good morning. The Wednesday session of the Kansas State Board of Education is now called to order. Notice we have nine members present. Mr. Roberts will be expecting at some point in the future. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? And if not, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda. Kathy Bush makes the motion. Is there a second? Dean Horst seconds the motion. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries nine to zero with one absent. We are happy to have with us today graduate students from Shawnee Mission School District. And I'm going to ask each one of them to introduce themselves and tell us what you do professionally.
Hi, I'm Janine Collier. I'm an instructional coach at Willamette High School in Shawnee Mission.
Hi, I am Jessica McGovern. And I am also an instructional coach at Apache Elementary in Shawnee Mission School District. I'm a graduate student from the Kansas State School Board.
I'm Jennifer Gudea. I teach sixth grade at Briarwood Elementary in Jefferson. I'm also a student in KSC.
My name's Jonathan Barlow. I teach sixth grade at Briarwood Elementary in Shawnee Mission School District.
I'm Molly Hohner. And I teach sixth grade at Apache Elementary.
Good morning. I'm Erin Holder. I teach second grade in Apache Elementary.
Good morning. I'm Maggie Carter. I teach sixth grade at Apache.
I'm Joanna Recht. I'm an instructional coach at the Ford.
I'm Gloria Hastings. I am the music teacher at Marion Park Elementary in Shawnee Mission.
Hi. I'm Amy Schick. And I teach high school math at Shawnee Mission North. Been doing it for 19 years.
Good morning. I'm Kendra Schirberg. And I am a seventh and eighth grade reading teacher at Hockaway Blue School.
Good morning. I'm Vanessa Valdez. I teach kindergarten at Shawano Elementary.
Well, we welcome you and thank you for being here. If you have questions later on, I'm sure that any of us will be able to address those during the break or at any other time. But we really appreciate you doing here. And by the way, we really appreciate what you do for kids. I'm going to welcome John Harding and Luann Baron. And they will be given the quarterly reports for the State School of the Blind and the State School for the Deaf. And I assume you guys know which direct, which, I suppose you have this plan. So we'll just sit back and listen to you. And then I'm sure there'll be a number of questions at the end. But welcome, and we look forward to hearing you.
Good morning, board members. And Chairperson and Commissioner Watson. John and I will be taking turns with our presentation this morning in order to...
What we'll be talking about are the needs for both of the schools and what our common goals are. And we will be, of course, taking turns on presenting. I will be covering the Kansas School for the Deaf and also the LEAD-K initiative that was passed. Some of you may want to know what's happening with that and what the current status is with These are the common goals that we feel are indicated for both schools. We want all of our children to be challenged to their fullest potential, to have the most successful life that they can. And these goals do fit with the board's outcomes. And that's the work of the outreach and field services team and the key people in that process for child's, for those children's educational success.
Good morning. Both schools aim to have programs that are individualized to meet the needs, of course, of each student. And we offer year-round specialized programs that augment services for each child. And these things include extended school year, transition programs, athletics. We provide statewide outreach services that address local needs through professional development, mentorship, information sharing, referral, and the development of new teachers. And I must say, we're extremely grateful for the funding that the Kansas State Department of Education provides in supporting these training grants, including, and including them as part of the TASAN network. These new teachers receive the full support of our schools and are making a difference in the lives of students. And both schools aim to have qualified certified instructors who have expertise in vision, deafness, hard of hearing, and/or deaf-blindness. And this includes both improving the skills and qualifications of existing staff and through the hiring of new staff.
In addition to the core academic curriculum of general education, both programs see additional needs to fit the needs of the populations. Deaf and hard-of-hearing students receive bilingual ASL instruction through that framework. And then for blind visually impaired students, they receive instruction for expanded core curriculum. These students need both of these additions to their education in order to be successful, either in the deaf and hard-of-hearing realm for natural access to language and for the blind visually impaired realm for access to literacy. These help meet the needs of these students for their specific disability needs. And the goal then is to provide all students, professionals in each district with as much support as possible, with this, including a center-based program.
Both schools aim to have practices and programs that align with the new vision of the state board. All of our programs and services are really student-focused and individualized. We promote and incorporate social emotional skills in our curricula. And we're exploring new ways to ensure that students are engaged and productive after they have exited our schools. We aim to improve operational efficiencies between the schools and in all departments. And we appreciate the opportunity to work with Dr. Brian Jordan and the Kansas Association of School Boards. And we look forward to presenting a plan to the board next month that's informed by the report recently compiled by CASB. The stakeholder meetings, the survey of other school districts and special schools, and the review of our administrative structure will allow us to reflect on our schools and ensure that our students' interests come first in all that we do. Both schools aim to maintain collaborative relationships with local, state, and national agencies. We want to thank the board for dedicating time and energy to ensuring that our schools reflect, really think about, and offer programs that are consistent with the larger work that you do. We understand that we are dependent on the support of the state board and the Kansas Department of Education in order to maximize the state services that we offer to these unique population of students. Only through collaboration with other programs can we really fulfill our mission.
One of the questions that the board asked was what would a 24-year-old that's successful that has come from our programs look like? And so we set out to define the meaning of success for those students. And there are more than three, obviously, but the main focus would be that each individual student is successful by the gains that they make towards their ability to succeed. And that would be variable, dependent on their abilities, of course. We would want for young children to grow up with confidence, to have the skills to be able to adjust to the changing world that they're in, including technology, employment opportunities, and moving into the workforce. We want to ensure that our students are adaptive and they have those skills to be able to do These would be how we define success for our students. We have high expectations for our students as they become adults. And we continue to challenge them and stretch their minds and stretch their areas of interest to the best of their ability. We want our students to be self-sufficient adults that are independent, that complete two- or four-year college, that they have certificates in their employment, that they're able to advocate for themselves, to be civically engaged in their communities. And so these are the ways that we would define success for our students. I'm going to talk about outreach services. It's a significant goal for us to provide more services to deaf and hard-of-hearing students throughout the state. That was one of the recommendations from the stakeholders meetings that we had to put more focus into that area, to provide those services for professionals and parents throughout the state. At this time, the outreach department has a four-year strategic plan in place. And so I'm excited to meet with Brian Jordan and to be able to do a comparison between what outreach has in place and what the recommendations are from the study. We also have worked with CEASD for accreditation, and they have made specific recommendations. So we'll be taking a look at all of those to see what, where the similarities are and where we need to make some changes. For partnerships, we'll be looking at shared employees, expertise, and versatility with entities throughout the state being able to provide those services. Our intent is to use our existing staff that have specific training and knowledge on different topics to be able to go out and present throughout the state and provide those workshops and From the recommendations from the stakeholder meeting and the report that we received from Brian, we will continue to reallocate staff, look at our current resources in order to best support and provide services throughout the state. Not only to provide those services in the state, but to maintain the school-based program and ensure that there's a balance there. Many good things have taken place during my interim tenure at KSD. These are the things that have happened to this point. We've expanded the birth-to-three program, our early intervention program, which provides home visits to families. Those numbers have doubled. We had 18 last year, and we're almost at 40 this year. Most of the infants and toddlers in those services are provided by Johnson and Wyandotte County, and KSD works with those counties. As far as our transition program, of course, we want our students to be successful when they complete high school. We've been focusing on improving the current curriculum in that program in order to expand partnerships with businesses throughout the community that would be willing to provide internship opportunities for our students. The Chamber of Commerce in Olathe had their career expo yesterday, and our students were able to attend that to have mock interview skills and gain experience in that area and possibly tap into any internships that would be available to them. We've increased the number of job shadowing opportunities and dual placement opportunities. We have many students who are taking classes at Olathe North. And those would consist of advanced technology classes or different courses that KSD doesn't offer. We are advancing our relationships, not only with local businesses, but state businesses and partnerships throughout the state. Especially within the deaf community, there have been a lot of meetings and opportunities to engage and talk more about what's happening at the school so that there's a better understanding As far as partnerships, we're increasing our partnership with the deaf-blind community, with school districts. So a lot has happened within the last five months. We have a very unique program where we're able to meet the individual needs of the students who are deaf and hard-of-hearing. We have students who use spoken English only, who do not sign, all the way to students who use ASL exclusively for their primary language. Those students are bilingual, have access to written English as well as spoken English. And so we are constantly adjusting our program to meet the individual needs of our students. For example, we have language facilitators that we provide for students who use oral English. They receive that adult support where they are having the language facilitated to them until they acquire ASL. And then we also have ASL immersion classes so that students, because they're, they come to the school and they're immersed in an ASL, they can acquire ASL at an accelerated rate. We offer SLP services. We offer deaf studies as a formal course in the secondary building. Speech and language pathologist. Okay. Yeah, that, they work with children on speech production, language development, and so forth. So they receive those services at KSD to improve their spoken language skills. Here I want to talk about critical mass, which is the number of students that are in a classroom or a program that share common communication modes. Those communication modes would be sufficient to support direct interaction and opportunities with their peers and with other adults. And I'm referring to the campus-based program and what we're able to offer there. And that may look different for services that would be provided throughout the state. And again, we provide services based on the individual needs of each student. As I said earlier, there is a range of students, anywhere from a mild hearing loss who may be appropriate for a 504 and minimal support, all the way to a student with an IEP that needs ASL support or spoken English support. The goal is for them to have skills and be fluent in both of those languages and develop As far as positives, I'm sure that you all are aware that we are accredited through CEASD. They provide expertise in the field of deaf education. And we continue to benefit from new research and knowledge-based practices. And that aligns very well with KISA, which is the state's program. Because they align so well, we're able to be accredited through CEASD and recognized by KISA. And so we're looking for renewal of that accreditation in the fall of 2019. 2019, we're beginning to do a self-study, which will last for 18 months. And at this point, we're waiting to look through the rest of the report from KASB in order to see where things are aligned and where we need to make different recommendations as part of the CEASD process. We do have things that we need to improve on. And what I'm addressing here are things other than the KASB recommendations. We have an increasing number of students with secondary disabilities that are coming into KSD. Currently, we have 33% of our students that have a secondary disability, meaning that our staff that's trained in deaf education will need to receive increased training on working with students that have autism, who are deaf-blind, and a variety of other additional disabilities. And so we will definitely be tapping into TASAN's resources and support for that. Continued partnership with KSSB in order to support the children that are deaf and deaf-blind. Now I'm going to talk about the LEAD-K initiative that was passed, which is also known as the This initiative was started by a group who was interested in LEAD-K. And LEAD-K stands for Language Equality and Access for Deaf Children and/or Kids. And it addresses the need for language acquisition at an early age for children who are deaf or hard-of-hearing. And the goal then is to help these children be kindergarten-ready. The initiative addresses the need for assessments and monitoring of children between the ages of birth to eight and their, their language development. The group saw a need for more accountability to ensure that students were identified as deaf or hard-of-hearing and that they were provided support and assessments on an ongoing basis, which would be every six months to ensure that they're progressing in their language development and that interventions can be in place as needed if there was an issue with an assessment. And the goal then is for these children to be equal to their hearing peers when they The premise for the bill, some of you may already be familiar with, that's included, I've included that information in my weekly updates to you. And I've been trying to keep you updated with the work of the 16-member committee that's developing the program for this. We have been working for the last 18 months, actually 16 months now, on this. So the premise for the bill is that deaf and hard-of-hearing children have unique challenges. It's not a simple fix as far as just a hearing aid or a cochlear implant. Deaf and hard-of-hearing children don't have the same access to language that hearing children do. And if those children don't receive that early access to language, that can create severe language delays in these children. One of the biggest issues that is seen is called the Swiss cheese effect. And basically, that means that they have gaps in their language. When they have gaps in their language, that, of course, impacts their literacy develop and they, development, and they become further and further delayed. Research shows that children that have a unilateral loss, meaning they can hear in one ear, but they have a loss in the other ear, still struggle in school as well. And their emotional development is impacted. They oftentimes may be the only child in their school who is deaf or hard-of-hearing, and they're left with the feeling of isolation. So the intended outcomes of this bill is to address those gaps and those language delays so that these children are identified early, that they can receive the interventions that they need. The desire is for deaf and hard-of-hearing children to enter school at the same level as their hearing peers. This would ensure that they're ready to learn and that they're socially and emotionally ready for development, further development. We are approaching the final phase of the work that we've been doing to develop the program. And we have a draft report that we will be presenting to the legislators in January. And that will include all of the committee's recommendations, the qualifications for the evaluators, the implementation database, what sort of assessments will be used. The one thing that we've not completed as far as a committee is a cost analysis, and that should be completed by Friday, when we have our last subcommittee meeting. And then we'll have a wrap-up meeting on December 15th. And of course, with those recommendations, I will definitely share those with Dr. Watson to share with the board in order for you to be kept up to date on what's happening. So the recommendation is that the Kansas School for the Deaf take the lead on providing the assessments and the programming for the LEAD-K bill. We don't know at this time if the legislators will agree with that. And what that means is that we'll be asking for additional funding, starting in FY 2020. At this point, again, we're doing the cost analysis for the entire language assessment program. So it's a very exciting time for this project to get started, and we're definitely looking forward to it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I'm going to move, try to move fairly quickly through the school for the blind piece of this. And I know you want time for questions as well, so I'll try to make this clear and concise. I know the board is interested in what does success mean for our school and, more importantly, for our students? And we've given this a lot of thought. It's really more to us, more than college and career. We believe that both are important, of course. But we expand the definition a bit by saying that success also means that young people can fulfill individual goals, have the competencies to influence the world around them. Students must develop an awareness of themselves and of the wide range of options before them, the competencies to pursue those options, and the ability to make good future choices for their lives as engaged citizens of this world. This is really known as what we call self-determination. Each student who is, in our state, who is visually impaired must, in addition to possessing solid academic skills, be able to access the printed word. This means being able to utilize Braille, large print, and/or auditory skills to gather and analyze information in order to make informed decisions. Each student must have solid orientation mobility skills that allow them to move confidently and safely in their community. Each student should have some form of social network that involves caring and trusting relationships. Central to this idea is having the social skills that are necessary to develop healthy relationships with others. I have a pretty bad Venn diagram in front of me. I have to take credit for this, but I placed it here to highlight that we see ourselves really as more than simply a school. Oftentimes, people see us almost exclusively as a school. That's what people relate to. They, they know what bells are like in prom and graduation. But we've begun to see ourselves as more than a school, but rather a network of services. And I think that's a more accurate description. We believe it's more, more than a slogan. It represents the hard choices that we have made in recent years to integrate our programs and to serve everyone. And everything that we do is part of our outreach to the approximately 1,500 students across the state who are visually impaired. As we continue to evolve, I imagine an even closer integration of our programs and the realization of our goal to have a positive impact in ways large and small on the lives of each student who has access, who across our state who is visually impaired or deaf-blind. It doesn't mean that every student has to come to our school, but it means we have a responsibility, a responsibility to each and every one of them in some small way to their success. Goal one for us is provide an intensive holistic education for children. This really focuses on the campus programs. And when we think about this, this goal was written with our campus program in mind. The students that enroll on our campus have the opportunity to develop, enhance, and improve these skills that are listed here on this slide, that are essential for when students return to their homeschools and home communities, wherever and whenever that may, might be. Each student on our campus is assessed weekly by teachers in at least two of these expanded core areas. For students who do not attend KSSB, our extended school year summer school program offers three weeks of programming that's rooted in the expanded core listed here. And, and I would like to note that we'll be offering a week-long summer program this year in Hays, and we're excited about that. That's the first time ever. And that's really in response to directors saying, we need you to come out this way as well. Goal two for us is to build capacity. This is really the non-campus part of our school, those folks that we call field services. And we take this seriously because it's critical for services across the state. This means recruiting and mentoring new TBIs. And I'm proud of the work that this group really has done. They've invested heavily in developing relationships. Everything we do in education is about relationships. They've developed relationships with local education agencies, special ed directors, to better understand the needs and provide what's needed in a student's homeschool or district. We made huge strides by locating our field service staff regionally and providing leadership through service. They're able to refer students to, to our campus for more intensive services when and if that's appropriate. So we've hired people in Garden City. We have someone in Wichita now, Reno County, Topeka, Kansas City. So we're across the state and able to respond to, to needs quicker. However, we need to continue to adjust the balance between campus and field services. This is, this is tricky. Neither one of them is mutually exclusive. And we're committed to moving the resources to where they're needed the most while recognizing the value of each of our programs and individual staff. Many of our teachers are serving multiple roles, and almost all teachers now support students on and off campus. It's a big change for us in a typical week. By taking a hard look at what's needed and what isn't needed, we've been able to grow our statewide services and have a bigger impact. These efforts have not been easy, but we believe in making, it is making a difference for more students across our state. It requires people to be individually versatile, which is hard for people who've been used to doing the same thing for a long time. Some of you might be able to relate to that. It's essential to meet the needs as field and campus service integrate more closely. I've mentioned this previously, but all staff are asked now to stretch themselves a little bit and to assume new and varied roles. In addition to direct service, almost all teachers are involved in some sort of leadership activity, which means workshops, making presentations, organizing low-vision clinics, meeting with sped directors, et cetera. These are, these are not easy changes for people, but I've asked them to do it, and I've tried to model that myself. Some of the strengths of our school, you can see listed here. I won't, I won't... I won't read all of them, but, and they're all not new. You've probably heard of some of these before. We've examined every single one of them and asked ourselves the question, "How can we improve the value of these programs and services to students, schools, and families?" We've expanded the Braille Challenge to Wichita. We have two sites this year. Again, I mentioned ESY going to Hays, Extended School Year or Summer School. And we made a real push to expand our community partnerships. Our KC Blind All-Stars is a nonprofit that helps us take in money for extras. We had a benefit walk this fall, and it really was a remarkable effort and a first effort to welcome the community to our campus and see the work that we do. As you know, if you've been there before, we have fences around the building. So those fences can convey two things, either stay out, or it can say, "We're safe." But I think it also needs to say, "We welcome you." So we try to open our gates and invite people who have never been to our campus before to come see the work that we do. We did this walk in conjunction with a track meet, and people are always curious about seeing our kids. So it was a great event. I encourage you to come next year, because we're gonna try to do it again next year. However, we also need to improve. We acknowledge that no school must, is able to stand still these days. You have to improve. We need to improve our use of remote technologies to deliver services. We need to develop skills in behavior autism and deaf-blindness and to improve our partnerships. We're not afraid to reflect on what we need to improve, and we're working hard to address the things here. I want to acknowledge the work that TASN does under the direction of Colleen Riley to support schools who serve students who are complex. This is a big challenge for schools across the state, the complexity, the multiple disabilities. We use the TASN resources regularly to improve our own services and programs, but we have to get better with these students, too. Finally, I know the Board enjoys hearing and seeing stories of success. I've listed these two pictures up here. The one on the left is a recent picture of our goal ball team. We compete against schools who are much larger than us, Ohio and Indiana, Arkansas. They have often teams of thirty or twenty-five, but that does not diminish the pride that we feel when our students give their best. On this recent weekend in St. Louis, families from Chanute, Alathan, and even Dodge City traveled to support their children in competition, seeing the pride and happiness of these parents that watched their children be a part of a team sport for the first and perhaps only time is really a humbling experience. The second slide is our new coffee cart that First National Bank gave us a small grant. One of the things we did was purchase a coffee cart, because I like coffee, but other people do, too. And one of the students pictured here is totally deaf, totally blind. And I can't tell you what it's done to expand their opportunities for communication, social skills, and to get them out in our small community. We partner with a cupcake company on Wednesdays, so if the board meeting is on a Wednesday, you're in luck. But thank you for your time this morning. I know you have some questions.
Thank you. I have several. I appreciate, first of all, this is the most comprehensive, since I've been on the board, this is the most comprehensive report that we have received, and I appreciate that. However, there's a danger to that because it generates many questions. You talked about the outreach program at the State School for the Blind. And Luanne, you referred to wanting, Luanne, you referred to wanting to expand that at the State School for the Deaf. What services are now provided, say, for instance, in Western Kansas? Are there, and what are your plans for the future?
At this point, most of the outreach team is on campus at KSD, and there's a considerable amount of traveling to provide those services. They provide evaluations, consultations, birth-to-three services, workshops, professional development, mentoring for teachers, teachers of the deaf. And also, there is a Teacher of the Deaf grant that we've received through TASN, and we provide support in that way. And so all of those services are provided through our outreach department. The connections that they make throughout the state are in person, through emails and through phone calls at this point. We also have the Auditory Training Unit System, the FM system, that are provided throughout the state, and also the Hearing Aid Loaner Bank that comes from the outreach office. Our audiologist travels the state and drops off those devices in the fall and goes back to pick them up in the spring, and then provides training and services throughout the school year to staff in the state that need it.
We provide Deaf Ed 101, 201 workshops. We provide family ASL classes, support for families, distance ASL classes, ASL immersion camp. A lot of the camps are happening on the KSD campus, but we're exploring opportunities for camps outside of the campus.
And did I hear you correctly, you said that through your work with Brian Jordan, you may be expanding that program?
That is correct. In fact, we're meeting with Brian Jordan for the first time after receiving the report today to have further discussion with him about what we can be doing. I'm looking at the report with very open eyes and very open-minded in order to get this information. And we've often talked about expanding our outreach services, and obviously, the stakeholders see that as a great need as well. And it also came as a recommendation from CEASD. And so we're at the point now of looking at our current staff that's on campus and considering reallocation in order to provide those expanded services. And so obviously, we would have to expand our outreach department. And exactly what that looks like at this point, I would not be able to tell you that. That's going to require more analysis and discussion. We have discussed providing regional support throughout the state, but that hasn't been discussed in depth yet.
I appreciate you addressing that. And I also appreciate your comment early on about, you know, about our mission. What does a successful twenty-four-year-old look like? And this is not something that you can control, but we have graduation effective rates listed on our website for every school in Kansas with two exceptions. And that's the State School for the Blind and the State School for the Deaf. So you don't have any control over that, but I would like for us to be able to have that data. Can that be done? So we can, you know, and we realize you have multiple other issues, you know, because students with multiple disabilities. But that's something, we need to know the benchmark.
I think you make a good point with data. One of the things we want is more data ourselves. We don't actually know how many students in the state are visually impaired. There's one count through the American Printing House for the Blind, which counts students who are legally blind only. And there are students who fall outside the category of that definition. But we'd certainly like to have better data, transition data as well. It's a critical thing. I can assure you that we've given a lot of thought and due diligence to thinking, "How are we better supporting students once they graduate? What are they gonna do next? Are we out in those communities asking businesses, talking with parents, working with adult services, to say, 'How can we support you? And what is your plan when you return?'" It's not an easy issue of the size of the state, but we have allocated staff to ask those questions, to drive out, and to begin making those connections with local communities.
Yeah, both of your school, oh, go ahead.
I would agree with John's statement. Our data is based on the newborn hearing screening that is done through sound beginnings. And so our numbers are based on that information. And those students, those babies would have failed those tests when they're born. But we don't know what the numbers are when students enter or leave the state after the age of eight. And so we need help with that in order to have stronger data. The stronger the data that we have, the better we're able to serve the students throughout the state when we know where they are.
And the next thing, you both, both of your schools have been there more than a hundred and fifty years. So you have a great deal of history. Maybe I'm the only one interested, but I doubt it. I would like to know some success stories, some, and I'm sure you have many. And I'm not asking for now, but when we meet again or when we come to visit, if you could tell us-
I'll give you a quick one.
-success for forty-year-olds.
Yeah, if you just allow me, I'll give you a quick one. As you said, that was at Sprint's campus a few weeks ago. Actually, Luanne was there, too. They did a technology expo, an accessibility expo, actually. New devices and products for people who are visually impaired, blind, deaf, hard-of-hearing. And as I walked around, there was a young man who introduced himself and said, "We'd like to do some research on your campus." Of course, I signed a non-disclosure agreement, so I can't tell you what it is. But he was a graduate of our school, and I didn't know that before I met him that day. But he was obviously very successful and was proud of the school, told me some stories about it. So there are some out there, and we'd be glad to share more with you.
Okay, I don't expect today, but at some point in the future. What issues do you have in employing, attracting, and retaining qualified faculty?
I think we have the same problems of everybody else. I was in Hays last week talking with special ed directors, and I understand the shortages of qualified staff. I hear directors visiting colleges and beating the bushes for people who are qualified trying to recruit. It's the same problem and probably even larger for us. We don't have a university-based program here in this state. So when we train people, we have to send them to Nebraska. Now, I love Nebraska, because I'm from there, but I'd much rather send them to Fort Hays State or KU. It's hard to recruit people when you have to send them out of state to Texas to get a practicum experience and so forth. So it's very difficult. I'll just leave it at that.
Part of our outreach strategic plan is to reestablish a deaf education program, specifically at KU, if possible. KU formally had a program. We would like to reestablish that in the state. We do have fifteen students who are currently attending Valdosta State University in Georgia as part of the TOD training. We would like to very much have that in the state again. We continue to see those challenges throughout the state as far as needs for TODs. As far as KSD, our challenge is finding teachers for both math and science. And that's a national problem in other state schools for the deaf of being able to, not being able to find those teachers. So we've been using retired teachers at this point. But over the next several years, it's going to become more of a struggle to find teachers for those positions. Currently, we have ten student teachers that will be coming to KSD this spring for their student teaching opportunity. And we're hoping through them gaining that practical experience and knowledge that that can be a recruitment tool for us, not only at KSD, but for other schools throughout the state, if they would be interested in moving to other parts of Kansas.
Excuse me, a quick rejoinder to that, too. I would say, since we've made a shift to outreach field services at School for the Blind, we've had people who frankly, good professionals, young professionals, who are interested in working for us now in that capacity. They like the idea, they like the direction of that, and we've been able to attract a few people. The flip side of that is, we don't want to pull them away from directors and schools that need them. So we've been very cognizant of that and tried not to pull the rug out from under those folks, but to allow them to continue to provide direct service when they've been doing so before.
Other people still teachers, so you- I'm almost-
Guilty.
How is the birth-to-three services provided? How are birth-to-three services provided?
Birth-to-three services are all provided in the home, where there's a visit at least once or twice a week. And our providers go out and work with families. And they're actually getting down on the floor and modeling for parents how to interact with their deaf or hard-of-hearing child. And we also have a parent playgroup that takes place once a month on our campus. There's training provided to tiny K networks throughout the state, those providers, so that they can make sure that they're providing those students, those babies in Western Kansas with those services. Most of the direct services for birth-to-three is in Johnson and Wyandotte County at this point.
For the School for the Blind, direct services are provided when requested by Part C networks, birth-to-three networks, there are thirty-six networks across the state. So we do get requests to do home visits. Most of the services are through what they call the primary coach model. So they have one person who's kind of delivering those services. So we try to respect that. But we are increasing our awareness of our services because we have people now located across the state who can, who have access to those students.
Yeah, I want to address Senate Bill 323, and this is really not a question. It's just simply to say, we are the responsible agency for, we are the local board of education. And I heard about Senate Bill 323 well after it was in the process, when we visited one time. We should be the first people. As a matter of fact, we have regulatory authority, and we can, in many cases, solve problems more efficiently than they can in the legislature. We are developing legislative, we are developing better relationship with the legislature, and I'm very proud of that. But in many cases, we shouldn't, we should hear about that before they do. We are responsible, and we need to be partners in dealing with the legislature. Actually, I'm lecturing you. We need to be partners. That should not be something we find out about after the fact. That's something that we should actually be the first people to hear about that. And if there are issues, in many cases, we may be able to solve those problems outside of the legislative process. And as I think I heard you say, Luanne, in part of your presentation, the legislators may or may not like this or something like that. You said something like that. In this case, you only have to convince six of us, whereas there's many more across the street. But anyway, in the future, if there are anything that comes up from a legislative perspective, we need to, we need to know about that in the very early planning stages so that we can be a partner. And for my colleagues, I only have one other thing, and then I will get to your questions. And I don't usually dominate like this, but that's, that's, sorry. When we come to visit, I would hope that we would like to actually go into classrooms and see things that are going on. And we would also like to have time to ask questions. I feel like, in many cases, we have been herded from one place to the other when we come to visit the State School for the Blind and the State School for the Deaf. And I would like for us to have a much more freedom to go places and ask questions and do that. And I realize that neither one of you were ever in charge of that process in the past. And so as we have new leadership, I would like for us to be able to reevaluate the process of visiting the school, which would be much more meaningful for us.
I'll just say, we would welcome that as well. And both messages have been presented to us very clearly, and we understand and appreciate that. If you have ideas or other suggestions, we'd certainly welcome those. We want it to be a transparent process and something that's enjoyable for the board.
And I apologize to my colleagues for taking much more time than I usually do. I am finished. Kathy?
This is Luanne. We do like questions. We want your questions. We value that. I wanted to go back to the SB 323 comment and that the board didn't feel that it was included from the beginning. And I completely understand that and want to ensure you with the new leadership that that will not happen again. We're very adamant of keeping Dr. Watson informed and aware so that he can keep you informed in turn. I mentioned earlier that there will be a final draft of the recommendations, and that will be submitted to Dr. Watson for your review. And I'm always happy to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you, and we appreciate that. Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your presentation. I would echo what Jim said about providing us some good information today. I'm particularly interested in the outreach piece and the transition piece. At your particular schools, I know you serve, provide direct service at those schools. But seven of us represent other parts of the state. And I'm sure people other than I are very interested in what outreach opportunities there are. And I know, John, you spoke to that, and Luanne, I believe you indicated, at least I jotted down, that you are working on a four-year strategic plan for outreach. So I really look forward to hearing about that and seeing those opportunities expanded for our children and parents throughout the state. Because I don't necessarily think the children have to come to Kansas City to provide, to get the services that they need. So that's particularly interesting, interesting for me to, again, see what you will be doing with that. I specifically represent the Wichita area, and we do have, I know, having worked in the schools and worked in one of the schools where the deaf children attended, I'm fairly familiar with what's done there. But I know there's other places that really look forward to having expanded outreach opportunities. That goes along with the transitional services, you know, because we want these children to be successful twenty-four-year-olds, which you both mentioned. So I look forward to seeing what your expanded plans are for those also.
We had, just yesterday, we had one of our staff say, "Why can't we do a transition program out here?" out here, meaning out there closer to Manhattan? And I thought, well, that's an interesting concept. Let's talk more about that. I, I know that we're open to that. We need people from the field to, to give us ideas and to break some of those, those boundaries and the barriers that we've set for ourselves in terms of transition or providing services across the state. I mentioned that it's about relationships and I think we've sort of ceded ground unnecessarily in the past, but we're really trying to make an effort to listen, to be respectful, to, to hear what the needs are and then really try to, to address those. We know we can't do it overnight, but we are committed to doing that.
Dina?
Thank you. I too am interested in what you're doing with outreach because most of my district isn't close to, to the Kansas City area. I think I've got a pretty good picture of the fact that you're working on it and hoping to expand it to a greater extent than what it is now. And I would encourage you to continue down that path because there are a number of individuals who need the services but don't want to send their child to, to a school. That is so far away unless they just have to. And I think they're all, like all of us as parents, we like to have our children with us as long as we can possibly have them there. So I think that's kind of a normal fact of life, so to speak. One of the things that has concerned me, and it has to do with, with the deaf who don't, maybe don't know that they're going to be blind too. I happen to have a family friend who was deaf, went to, to the deaf school in, in Olathe, but became blind later in life. Had no support system in that sense for, he had not learned Braille when he was in school, when it would have been easier for him. And as a result, as an adult, he had to learn as much as he could possibly learn and a Braille so that he could be a functioning adult without having to have a lot of assistance. But he ended up having to have a lot of assistance because it was very difficult for him to all of a sudden have to learn that process. So I guess I'd like to know if students are given opportunities to learn both, I'm assuming it also, you could be blind and suddenly become deaf. So are we giving opportunities to, to students who don't experience that malady at that point, but someday they may?
I really appreciate the question. I spent 14 years in deaf-blindness before I became Director of Instruction at the school for the blind, so it's a, a passion of mine and not many people have that awareness or that concern. So I really appreciate that. What, what do we do about it? Last week, we, through our Deaf Blind Project on our campus, offer Usher screening, what you're describing in many cases, where a student or a, a young person is deaf or hard-of-hearing and then gradually loses their sight over time. It's called Usher syndrome. So we do Usher syndrome screening. We have a former nurse who trains other nurses and early, early childhood providers to look for some of the signs and, and symptoms of early blindness and then makes a referral to, to, to doctors so they can get the appropriate services they need and information. As you know, it's an emotional time for someone to learn that they might be losing another sense. So the, the more information you can provide and, and support is critical. So we are addressing it. We're proud of our Deaf Blind Project and the services it offers. Again, the State Department of Education provides funding for individuals who are deaf-blind who meet qualifications and they offer support for those students through technology devices, consultations, which are often provided by our school. So I appreciate the question.
Thank you for your answer.
I'd like to add, we actually have the Helen Keller National Center that's housed at the K S D campus, providing services for adults. We have several students who are deaf and are losing their vision. My brother-in-law was born deaf and became blind at the age of 50, for example, and he received services pretty quickly for Braille and O and M, service orientation and mobility. But we need to get the word out that the option is there and that we're seen as a resource.
Thank you.
Janet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have to say ditto to what they've all said, you know, but I think Kathy made a really good point. I think we've all been rather spoiled, the three of us, John and Steve and I, because we hit, you're right in our neighborhood and let's face it, we represent all the children in the state of Kansas. And, and I think outreach is, is crucial. But this is a personal question, or not a personal question, but this is directed at you, John. I am a member of the Kansas, and this is really nothing to school, the, it kind of has to do with the school for the blind, but it's because it's housed there. But I'm a member of the Kansas Alliance for Arts Education. And I heard the other day at a meeting that accessible arts is no more? Is that correct or what's going on? Let me ask you that.
No, I, I don't, I do not know that. Diana Bryan is the executive director. They're still providing programming every Wednesday for our students.
Are they okay? Because I was told that they, they didn't think they were even there anymore.
We just talked about second semester two days ago, so I'm not familiar with that at all.
We could get some more information on that. I'd appreciate it because that was the understanding that I was informed. So I thought, oh, I, I should have called earlier, but I just thought I'd ask today. Thank you.
I don't see any more questions. I want to thank both of you. This is a much more comprehensive report than we've received in the past. I also appreciate your willingness to work with Brian Jordan as we look to move into the future to provide even better services to each student in our state. We will now be taking a break because at this point, we were, the rest of our day is a workshop and we'll be in the back of the room. And so everybody, which is much more conducive to, to discussion, so we don't sit here like this, we can actually look at each other when we're talking to each other. And so we'll take about a 10-minute break. And board members, you need to take your chairs with you or you're going to have to sit in one of those folding chairs.